When did you become so dainty?
Okay, it's a hot flash.
I do declare.
Fragile flower. Well, and our hair will just kind of...
No, mine won't. Mine will go to the kitchen.
Mine will just go flat.
It is 6:00 P.M. And I'm calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We are now in a workshop session. First thing on the agenda, Ms. Kelly Blackhall will have us taking our council photos. So she's in charge.
Let's go.
All right.
Anyone else want to join in?
She's really good. This is how I get it goes in.
Got to get those in the shot.
Oh, no. All right.
I say photo box.
Not much pal. So on the last slide and the last two slides, they show the final...
I think they're all option two.
Option two. The other options to talk through the percentages. So I've been in the top of my mind. So, so you know, this is pretty much a... Option two. Good. Fire. So anyway, we'll see in that map.
Could be some sort of feeling.
That's awesome.
We'll just say, you know, that there's a cost difference between the two, but it's not even a say that.
Smart.
We don't know what the alpha costs are.
That's true.
So we'll figure that out. We just want to make sure they understand that we're like inflation needs to be covered. Don't go into those details. We will decide that later. I mean, we'll bring it back. We're going to touch base with them so many times. Really, Highland Village just said, we are within budget in the project. Except for inflation, we're projecting inflation. But we also have some room that we're already equal to that inflation. And we know we can figure out on this.
When you do the date slide, you'll just say, hey, December. We're coming to you with something that won't freeze that inflation. But till then, who knows? So you want Stephen to...
No, I'm going to do it and then I'll like, I'll talk to you. I'll make some P T about it. So I'll talk about how we didn't leave the budget. So really, other than the design, all three of those slides, other than the design of slide three, L T F, every whole slide, and I'll call on you guys as soon as we come on. Okay, thank you. Sorry I didn't have any time to prep you guys beforehand.
That's fine. We play jazz, right? We play classical jazz, you know, whatever.
Do you have anything you want to get done now? It's hard to deal with. Just answers now. Honestly, I have to start Monday. Five, seven, 140 pounds.
He's got braces. He's still in high school.
Yeah, well, that's something.
Do you have any kid braces in the UK? And I had to go to...
They dust their chips. That chip on the grain is rolled all the way on the... It's got a little bit of...
Quick temper going. The same old Dallas guy. The one thing I wish they could do on TV is to give you a perspective of the screen. Because you can't. They'll hit a wedge and then roll off the grain. And then they'll get to a certain angle where you'll see it's like that. You can't. All working, covering your heart. Uh, just, I usually fly on weekends, so I don't watch TV. It's very nearsighted. Whole world's about money. I like, I like... Somebody gave you $200 million to kill a family member for $200 million. You have to tear one down.
Sounds like Charles Martin. That's funny.
Sorry. I'm sad about it.
Scoot over.
Sounds like that seems to be something.
We should have read you that a couple of years ago.
And they said you wouldn't dare.
Just watch us. They'll pay it. Because it brings a billion dollars with staff. Everybody like...
Come and watch that.
It's more expensive. So I have that there. Remember she did that artist thing? It's the six courses. So I get like half price. None of them are really good. Okay, I usually play that because it's like, like Park Slope. You just want to know you don't play everywhere.
What are they? Play that great.
Plantations. When you, you need a driver for these first three calls in. You're just getting against it. It's like that.
And it's in good shape.
People are going six thirty light now. That's true. Like, there's not a lot of... All those great murals and... So all this, there's no shade. Like, it's wild.
Shade.
Yeah. It's an actual... And then you just go there. They're not going anywhere. Drive directly over. Yeah. You're hitting off the eight straight away. That's not me. Teacher. Yeah. Pretty interesting. Western, like now, as you've been kidding? It's owned by the same people that own Broadwood. It's the same deal, so it's reasonable to play. It won't kill you.
Not really, because you don't think about it. Like, you don't feel it.
Have you been to that place, the colony that... We shame. We shame. We want to let you buy nine holes. It's just like... Sometimes you buy nine holes. It takes you maybe three minutes to go through the whole thing. You know, you're like, oh, what are you doing that for? Yeah, well, we did. We played eighteen. Took us about ten minutes. It's all, you know, a cloud, a cloud mouse, and mail.
Chris, what's the temperature in Broadwood these days?
I assume it's probably eighty-five. Not too bad. It's a hundred here.
Well, for the last ten days.
And I asked you. What's the humidity been?
Where the abs up to?
Abs up to, it was Saturday night, it was seven, seven. They scored two goals in the first two minutes.
I heard that from Kevin during...
A third goal before the end of the first period.
Were they playing Tampa?
Tampa, okay. So fear that my...
I don't know where we're going to match. Two more. Here's the story to go over.
Last year, we were in action one of those three. And they also won the last two standings. So we're a very young team. And one of our best scorers turned 21. I mean, they're very, they're playing on their head.
It was every four, five years, one year, then it's, you know, it creates growth. Thanks, Chris.
This is more than everybody wants.
Yeah, exactly.
Did you hear that story about John Elway sold the Broncos? How much money he lost because... That offered him more than shareholder, he got two million. He decided, nah, I want my money now. He would have thought...
Taking shares instead of money?
Yes, a few that taken the shares here. And like three million.
I know.
From when they...
Wonderful, how are you?
They are something. I think you'd like that.
Wondered too.
Yeah, how much money he lost from that.
Can't believe nobody wanted to join us out there.
Yeah, I don't know why. Get a whole group.
I'm sorry.
You can't look back.
Chris, yeah. Two seconds.
Good in here now. There you go.
We have a mortgage where we can only take pictures.
Seventy-year loan.
Yeah, this one's my fault.
Seventy-year loan. It's always your fault.
I'm okay with it.
Always your fault.
I went and talked to Kelly and she goes, I had an idea. Maybe we could do one outside. I was like, yes, do that.
Yes.
That's Arizona.
It is.
You're laughing. And I was just looking.
I was born to it. All right, welcome back. We are going to go ahead and move into item B of the workshop, which is discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. I've got Councilmember Green doing the pledges. I've got the indication. And we have certificates for the Citizens University graduation tonight. Going to go ahead and move into the consent agenda. Comments, questions on any of these? Item one. Consent agenda, item two.
Mayor, I did want to, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and answer my question. I don't understand this.
Russ, she's about to ask you.
Yeah. Unless you want to answer it. So basically, what this is, is typically, what we have is a contract with Russ, well, with L J H, right, to be our sub-concessionaire, our concessionaire. He then has multiple people that are doing business out there, right? He has small, different portions of control to different entities. So one of them is a dock as well as a fueling center out there. So this is typically what they do is they will, the order of operations is they come up with who they want to sublease those to, and then the city has to approve that and the Corps has to approve it. So they usually sign it ahead of time, knowing that the city has to approve it as well as the Corps. So when you're saying retroactive, that's what they do. The big deal about this is making sure that council got to see it so that we are, you know, from this point on, I mean, we will always bring back these sub-concessionaire types of agreements. What is it called, the sublease? Sublease, sorry, not sub-concessionaire agreement, to council. But the main thing for us was, it's not business as usual for us because we've given them notice that they will, our lease with them, our sub-concessionaire, our concessionaire agreement with them will end in 2025. So although they have no ability to give rights that they don't have, so they technically couldn't extend a lease beyond that, we wanted the, who they were doing business with to know exactly that very upfront, that it ends in 2025. So our lawyers insisted that we have that language in there. It is in there and we're here for approval on that. So it will not change anything with our, our late project. It's just allowing them to find another operator in that timeframe.
Okay, there's a March 31st, March 31st date. It seems to be the end, but then it refers to something that was on bill eight. What, what is that?
It looks like their, their trust agreement with Sam Stock expires March 31st, 2020. But our concession agreement with L A, L J H.
L J H, thank you. It expires April 14th.
So there's expires before the other one.
Are we good?
That answers my questions.
Moving on to item three. Item four. Item five. Item six. Do we anticipate seeing many more change orders for this one? I mean, we're at seventeen now.
We're anticipating not, but David has told me that before.
Fighting one right now.
You are fighting one right now? Okay, we may see one more then.
I'm used to it.
And just to remind council, the reason, it's because this was signed before we annexed this property. It was in Castle Hills. And so we normally have a provision that says we don't have to come back to you guys for change orders if it's within our contingency. That wasn't in their agreement. So because we inherited their agreement, we have to bring this all back to you.
Item F, seven.
I have a question about seven. Was, who should I ask this to, let me do it. So is the, so we did a speed study on Mill and Main, right? But we're only voting on Mill.
Because the speed study on Main indicated that existing 35 was close to main at 80% of time. But Mill Street does come lower because the speed is too high.
Okay. So if it doesn't change, then we don't, we don't vote on it at all?
Right, yeah. Main Street, we're not, we're not imposing a change in the speed limit because they, the side house speed is, is just a speed limit. So nothing changes there, or then side applies to Mill Street.
Okay.
Item eight. I've talked with the mayor of Highland Village and he's got no issue with being appointed. And I did talk with Councilmember Jones and he has no issue with being reappointed either. The history on this one, my understanding was that one of the challenges we have is if there's no way to, there's no process for moving the seat around. So if we end up...
I think continuity is best on this.
Yeah, well, and we are, we are the biggest one as far as the proportion of the dollars go. So historically, we've held the seat. And historically, Flower Mound has said if they can't have the main seat, they would get the vice seat. So Highland Village has taken that up. So that's, that's the history on that and why we typically tip our hat to Highland Village for that. Item nine. Need your report? Lots of changes there. Item 10. And this is, basically, I stepped down early from my eye on there. And so this is the official reset of that, of that seat. Councilmember Cade has been serving in that capacity. And I'm assuming you want to continue that?
Yes.
And then Ashley has been the staff member there for a while now. So I'd like to keep the continuity there. Item 11.
Do we have a list?
We have a list.
Recommendations, okay.
Yeah, now, the question, I don't want to break it into three for each team. I'd rather just have one person.
Do it all at one time, just have one person.
Brandon, do it. Don't Brandon.
So just, we, go through all the names?
Yeah, and to a point on. Now, we do have the place two on the Arts Advisory Board, but that has a specific requirement, so that's why it's vacant. So staff is working on filling that.
Yeah, we're not going to fill that until we have the...
Yeah, probably the very first one there.
Did we need to discuss that at this? Do we need to discuss me at this as a group?
Unless somebody has a...
I haven't seen it.
Has a challenge.
I haven't seen it either.
Then, yeah, we can, we can take a look at the list and go that route. Julie, do you have multiple copies?
I have another printout. I can make more copies if you want.
We can make another copy and we can, the other council can have it. They can just kind of review the names for the other two committees. That's item 11, reports. Brandon, I think I'll start with you. Kristen's been out of town. I don't want to put her under the gun. We do have an item for closed session for economic development. And that is the agenda. Item C, update of the public safety complex, design and construction.
Okay, Mayor, council. So I wanted to start the presentation by showing you where we've been and where we're headed. So as you can see, we're about, of tasks to complete, we're almost 50% complete with those tasks. Now, that doesn't mean it's timeframe. Obviously, construction takes a lot longer than the rest of what we've been doing. But right now, where we are is, we just, we're right between the red and the black. So we have put our first two bid packages out. And that's going to Councilwoman Green's comment about wanting to make sure that we were taking advantage of the economics right now. If we can put out early bid packages, so that's what we've been doing. We've got two additional ones we're going to be putting out this month as well. We're moving towards the condemnation of that P and C bank. So our attorneys have been working with Liz on that. And then we start with the renovation construction of the temporary sites. We move to final GMP right there in December. So that's really that final GMP that's guaranteed maximum price. That's really where we know what the final numbers are going to be and we're going to lock it in. So what we're talking today is conceptual. We are doing projections with regard to escalation costs. And Chris Squadra is here to talk more about that. But the reality is you don't, we won't know everything until that date. Okay? So, and then we have, we would have to do likely because we know we're under budget because of escalation costs and inflation. We will be doing a supplemental appropriation at time, construction, and then we, we start messing with police and fire having to relocate them. And then we put them back after construction is complete. Any questions on that timeframe? Okay. So I'd like Chris Squadra to, here, Chris. I know you like to feed it at your speed.
So we started out in July 2021. The number that went into the bond assumed a nine, a point nine percent per month escalation. At the time, 10.8% a year was considered to be very conservative. That was assumed to be found at the end of the year. 19.6% according to the A G C is what we actually saw. So that was 1.6% per month. So by December of the year that we passed the bond, we had chewed through more of our escalation than we, than we had predicted we would. The consensus was that escalation would run at 2% per month this year. The actual impacts in the North Dallas area in the first quarter alone were a staggering 18 to 20% escalation. Certainly, I've been doing this for 40 years. I've never seen anything like the first three months of this year. The unfunded escalation impacts to this project have been $11.5 million to date. So that's the difference between the nine tenths of a percent per month and the actual escalation that we saw. We budgeted escalation, but nobody ever would have assumed that we would see an 18 to 20% increase. The headlines in one newspaper this morning were that inflation continues to ravage construction projects. One pundit in that particular article said 20 to 30% could easily be seen this year. And I've been through a whole bunch of economic data and other presentations. I'm not going to belabor the whys, but we all know what's going on out there. So the budget is currently, if I were in your position, I would say, okay, great. That's bad news, but what about the future? What are you carrying to protect us against what's going to happen? So right now, we're carrying 15% contingency and bidding reserves in the cost estimate now. And that, that number is to protect us from what's going to happen between now and when we bring a GMP amendment to you. It's not 15 million. It's a little bit less than that because it's only on the construction portion, but it's pretty close to that. We also all know that a recession is looming. We, we all know that's happening. Construction demand in 2023 could easily drop. A lot of pundits, including people in this room, that forecast the revenue that you receive from building permits, say that we're going to far exceed what we budgeted for building permits this year. But next year, we are not seeing that backlog. So it's a difficult time. If this economy stalls, we do have some ad alternates that we can use to, that are necessary adds to the project to soak that up. And supply chain woes continue to impact our program. So not the best news, but these are the facts. I throw that out there for any questions.
So one of the questions you might ask is, well, one's enough enough. Like, are we at this escalation so much? Should we just... should we just put this project on hold? And so, the question I had asked this team was, are there cities that are putting these projects on hold? Because you don't know, it's really gambling. Right now, we've been, as you saw with that timeline, we've been pushing so hard, I mean, this team has been working faster than I've ever seen a team work, because we're fighting escalation every day, every delay is, is adding more, right? But there's also a point where we could have a fall off in the economy, and suddenly, things are better. So, you could wait and get better, or you might not wait, and it might get, it might not get better. Or you might have a police and fire department that doesn't have the right facilities in, in the meantime, right? So, the other, the other thing to think about is, you know, some cities, we've seen, not in this economic downturn, but Chris Squadra had an example of another city nearby that decided, well, we'll just reduce the scope. And so, what they found is they reduced the scope, they didn't build what they needed, they came back, and now they're building, and it's more expensive at this point, because they're building in two different tranches. And then the other issue, um, and I will say that, like, we looked at it, you know, obviously, one of the options is, we could cut back the scope so great that we can get close to within the budget. But we're looking at pre, when you guys decided on the, on the scope of the bond election, there were several scopes that we gave you guys, that was not what council had wanted. We would have to roll back to some of those scopes that did not meet all the needs and the future needs of the, of the department. That being said, we don't know what that dollar amount is right now, um, we will know by, by what, the time in December, when you get that maximum GMP. And, uh, we feel confident, wherever Gina is, that if council is Gina, that if we, if council at this point, for this overage, we can find the money. So, we just want to, one of the things at the end of this presentation is, do you guys want us to move forward, to continue moving forward? Do you want us to, we would have to come back to you guys if you wanted a different scope. We feel that we have the ability, we have good reserves, we have the ability to be able to, to make this work if necessary, um, and it does meet the needs of our police and fire department. So, with that, we'll continue with the presentation, but I wanted you to know, that is a decision, that obviously, something you guys might be thinking about. And if you guys have any other questions on that, with the headwinds, he's here to answer. Thank you. Okay, so during, anytime you, uh, go out for a bond election, and after you get back the approval to move forward, we have a con- conceptual design at the time we go for that bond election. But when you get in the room with the end users, and you're really looking at what are the needs, things start fine tuning. So, we've had some changes, um, the good news is, and I'll go through it, it's still within budget, other than the escalation at this point. So, um, fine tuning of the project, I'm going to call on some specific people to be the experts here, and tell you about why we had needs of these, just so you know, kind of the engagement, um, process. First, I wanted to have Don Wirthsberger talk about the engagement, uh, and input process, so if you wouldn't mind standing up, just talking about what your experiences has been, and how you've engaged with the, with the front level staff.
Sure, we find it's always important on this to keep circling back with the user groups. It's one thing to, you know, there's some firms that just meet with them for the needs assessment, and then just sort of shut them out. We feel strongly about, no, they're the ones that ultimately have to use it, it has to work for them operationally and functionally. So, we're in our third round with the user groups, last week, we, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we met with nine different groups, a few of the sessions were twenty-plus people, uh, for police and fire, in the different departments and the different settings. And what that gives us, really, the feedback of, if we're on the mark for that layout, and there were still some adjustments, uh, and what we have found, really, the incredible collaboration with police and fire in both of those, is opportunities to flex spaces, to be shared in multiple ways. We have some settings that, my gosh, are being shared six, seven different ways, which helps the overall project, and to keep us down where we want to be for program space, uh, so we have gone through that. And, you know, what the, the, really upside to that is to keep them engaged, keep them excited, and the sort of benefit, as they're getting ready to hear shortly, go into their temporary digs that are not going to be all that greater ideal, that they're excited with what is at the, you know, sort of, at the end of the rainbow in two years, when they get to move into their new building. They, they know what awaits them, and I think it'll help them, you know, be in better spirits and better, you know, make do efforts in the temporary settings. And there'll still be at least two or three more rounds with the user groups, as we dial down to their, you know, unique equipment, unique operational needs, uh, you know, different furniture, different pieces within their individual departments. So, we just always like keeping them engaged, because then we know we're on the mark, and we always keep, you know, alignment of the expectations, and with what is being delivered on the ultimate end product.
Thank you. Next, I want to talk about parking numbers and parking structure changes. Ferris, do you want to talk a little bit about what, what's kind of been fine tuned there?
Yeah, sure, so this is an evolving number that we've been talking about for, seems like, for months and months, so we are getting closer to having a civil engineering site plan that's reflective of the architectural layout and architectural site plan. And right now, we're sitting around seven hundred and fifty plus or minus spaces on the sixteen acre campus. Around three hundred and forty-four in the parking structure that's enclosed, and will be secure for employee parking. Keeping in mind, Jeremy Booker's been doing a lot of work with the departments, the user groups on the campus, Parks and Recreation, Library, IT, City Attorney's Office, and others that are sharing this, this, this space, and making sure that the citizens, the employees, and the location of that parking, at the end of the day, works for the site. Our problem is, is we're having to look at demolition. As the police and fire department move away, but there will be a period of time that the footprint, when, when burn starts to mobilize, we're going to lose, we're going to lose a hundred and fifty-plus parking spaces for a period of time, and we're trying to manage that. So, we have a meeting on Monday to discuss that, as the footprints for construction and demolition evolve. Ultimately, I think it will leave a little bit better, once both departments are fully out of the site. But again, we're working the numbers, we're going to make sure that we deliver a product that's not only good for our employees, but good for the public, because, again, community room and, and the library, Parks and Recreation over at Herring, there's a lot going on on the sixteen acre campus, uh, in addition to the LPSC, so we're, we're, we're working this, and, uh, and we'll, we'll get there.
So, I was going to have some more input on that, but I'm seeing the time, and I know we got to go through design, so I'm going to push through on this and kind of touch on this myself. So, um, the other thing with parking structure changes is that, um, the ground floor originally of the parking structure was intended to be all parking, now we have a large portion of that being a support center for police and fire, primarily, a lot of the police functions in there, and also, when you have the large vehicles, they're going to be stored under there. That's instrumental, so that you don't have, uh, like, for example, if SWAT comes in, and then they have to go to another, they have to respond to something, and then they have to go to another building to pick up their big vehicle, so you then go respond, not a good, not a good situation, so to have them all in one building is really ideal. We also have training room space that was necessary, so as you can see, this is the, this is the picture of the training room. Really, we had a much smaller training room that was scheduled, and, uh, fire department looked at us, police looked at us and said, you, you're crazy, we have to have a lot more people, um, in this facility. So, um, we, that, that was an add, but we were able to still, like you, you'll see in a second, come within budget, but we had to move around a lot of things. I did want to talk about data center relocation, um, Chris, Lee, will you talk a little bit about the opportunity we have here?
Absolutely, so, um, we're looking at moving, it's about four hundred and fifty feet, roughly, uh, into this hardened facility. It's, it's a scenario where you've got an opportunity that doesn't present itself, uh, very often. We looked at, since we're doing this in the annex remodel, but it's price prohibitive. We're going to have to relocate fiber no matter what, because the parking structure sits directly on top of it. But in this, we would be moving, uh, all of our, um, compute, if you will, that's currently in the annex, that's our main data center, into this hardened facility. Again, it made a lot of sense, uh, from the standpoint of, that we're supporting nine one one and those mission critical operations to off, also have, you know, the computer systems, if you will, that are going to be down the line, um, as a rec, as a prereq, if you will, for them to, to do their mission. So, that's the thinking, um, I would love to elaborate more, but I'm going to sit down unless you guys have any questions for me.
Do you guys have any questions about data center? I think it's a great opportunity, and it makes us more resilient, if we got hit by a tornado, our data center is still protected, because it'll be in that hardened facility.
I just have, not a question, but, uh, just, uh, when we talk about the parking, and, 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 we've got to really communicate to the folks who are using that area, our, our residents, uh, because I can see that being a big humbug, uh, for some folks, so, uh, we need to communicate, know, like, schedule.
Yes, sir, I think we're going to have a whole parking management plan, but communication's going to have to be a large portion of that. So, um, when Chris Squadra talked about, um, the budget being what was in the last bond election, that's not all the money we had in this project, um, we also had additional bond funds that we had sold to be able to do renovation, um, and for the design of this. So, we also had, I think it was an additional five million dollars, um, so the total budget for, uh, for this project is over a hundred, um, million dollars. So, the project costs, what they have, even with all of the additions that we've talked about, have come in within budget, so that's that ninety-six million. Um, the, the bank purchase, right now, we're going to condemnation, this is the appraised value we have for the property. Obviously, that'll have to be determined by the commissioner's court, not our commissioner's court, but, um, uh, for condemnation, and so that might be a little bit more, or might, might be exactly on point, we have no idea, we'll wait for that decision. Um, but we believe that's fair, and then those are the additional escalation costs, again, projected today, but we'll find out when we get to the GMP. So, with that, we'll hand it over to the design team to talk about, um, what their visions are.
So, I told you, uh, previously, we come with some, uh, some design options, as well as an update on the imagery, as soon as we have that together, this is not the only time that we'll come before you for that, uh, but we're going to share with you two options today. Uh, one of these will become our baseline for the project, and the other one is going to be carried through to the next round of estimating in Houston, and, uh, we'll continue to update you. And Chris Sano, as the project designer, is going to run through, uh, the majority of this line.
Thank you. So, uh, like I said, we're going to, or like Stephen said, we're going to go through two options, and kind of flip back and forth. To orient you, this is from the Main Street intersection corner at Main and Valley Parkway. So, you're seeing in the foreground, this is the Police and Fire Administration Building, and this is the public access under here, and beyond, to the right, is the fire station. So, some of the, the big variance in the option one and two is the high roof that you see here in the foreground. In option one, it is a trellis, that's what I call it, so it's an open structure, uh, roof, that provides different shadow patterns. And option two is a slightly pulled back, a little bit different geometry, but a solid roof. So, that really is a variation, this, this approach translates to the fire station as well, we're going to see that in a few minutes. So, we have a few, uh, additional views to see, so this is looking due west, so Valley Parkway is behind us, and you're seeing, uh, this kind of low roof and front porch welcomes visitors, uh, public visitors, um, from the east side looking west. And again, you're seeing offices up above of, uh, fire administration. And then, option two, again, that high roof changes, you're seeing some of the materiality, this, um, uh, lower portion is wrapped in a wood or a wood look product, so it's really warm, inviting space, and then you're seeing that material translated in option two on the high roof. When we look at the south elevation, so Main is behind us, we're looking right at this, the public entry, so this lower roof portion kind of extends out to greet visitors, it engages with the public lobby, which is in glass at the corner, so that really kind of creates a larger front porch at a pedestrian scale, again, wel- welcoming all public visitors to the building. And option two, again, you're just seeing that high roof transition. In the foreground here, we're just starting to show some ideas of what that plaza could look like, be again, a soft, combination of softscape and hardscape, really welcoming and inviting to the public. When we back up a little bit further to the street, um, obviously, you're seeing parking lot in the foreground, but you're seeing that, uh, two-story administration wing of, uh, primarily police on this side, so it's a bunch of, um, office spaces. You're seeing the window patterning, uh, creating kind of some movement in it, it's got a variation in rhythm that is fun and exciting. You're also seeing that this, this low roof, it extends to the west and, uh, creates a colonnade, so all of our public parking, which extends quite a bit down, if we do have visitors, they can be, you know, get out of the shade, a shade, I mean, into the shade, out of the sun or rain, and it welcomes them back to this public entry. In option two, um, the geometry of that roof changes slightly, and you're also seeing a focal point on the corner that kind of breaks the rhythm of offices, so this is essentially the kind of second floor public space. So, as, uh, public visitors are escorted through a series of, uh, procedures that get access to the upper floors, this is a zone that is more dedicated towards them, so represents, um, kind of that public portion of the building. As we move around to the fire station, so, um, we are at kind of, uh, Valley Parkway in civic circle. This portion on the right is the public entry for the fire station, and you're seeing the apparatus bay beyond on the left.
Chris, talk about that roof pitch, make sure that...
Sure, so these, um, there's some fun games and a little optical illusion, because the geometry, um, plays tricks on us. So, these roof planes are essentially flat, they're not truly flat, but they're essentially flat, but they're changing and playing kind of towards us. So, these, um, reach out to us, at, at both buildings, in both corners, that geometry play creates some dynamic, um, facade, and is intentionally addressing the public, to kind of bring them in and signify entry points. So, here's where you really see the, the option variation for the fire station, obviously, the apparatus bay, uh, here we see the trellis at the high roof, and option two, it turns to a solid roof with the wood looks off it. The materiality, we're seeing a natural stone at the face, and a similar rhythm that we saw in the Police and Fire Administration, but, um, kind of created in a different material, so this is wood and a metal panel. They serve different functions, but have a similar architectural language. And there it is, is option two. And then back to the public entry for the fire station, so this is, again, a, a front porch that welcomes visitors with that warm materiality, a solid screen wall that provides, uh, privacy for firefighters on duty, you know, they're living there, uh, twenty-four hours a day, so they've got outdoor spaces that are screened from the public view, and of course, a parking garage in the background. So, here's a side-by-side, fire on the left, police and fire admin on the right. You're seeing some of the similar language, but they each have their own personality, which I think is really nice. It's a unified, uh, city, public facility, but they do have their own different functions. And then option two, again, with that solid.
Can you go back to option one?
Sure.
I wanted to report what the feedback was from police and fire. So, for option one, um, we did a survey with our police and fire departments. So, option one was liked slightly more by our fire department, so fifty-one percent of the people liked option one, but less by the police department, so only forty-three percent of the police department liked option one. So, that means option two, you go to that, that got fifty-six point nine percent, option two, and then forty-nine percent, that was for police, and forty-nine percent. So, um, some of the comments that were made, because we allowed some free form, um, some of the, um, I, I don't think there was a strong hatred on either of these, that they were generally liked by everyone. The comments might be, uh, one said they thought this was a dated look with the wood, one very dated. One said, um, that the bir- the trellis was, um, a problem, because there would likely be birds roosting on it. Other people, uh, liked the wood look, thought it was warm and inviting, um, others, uh, felt that, I'm trying to think some of the other comments that were made, um, there was concern about not having, uh, having the trellis so that you didn't, so it didn't, it didn't cover for, you know, um, sun and protection like that. So, those were generally the comments, um, Terry, was there anything else that you wanted to report on any of those comments? Okay, that was generally it.
There was just several where they picked one and then said, but both of them...
But both of them are okay.
So, it was, there wasn't any, like, real divisive.
Sounds like a tug of war.
It's a tug of...
Thanks.
Why the, no help, no help.
The long skinny, loose steering windows.
That's what I think when I look at this, that's what dates it, are those long skinny windows. And I, when I first looked at it, then I went, that looks like loose steering. Is there a reason for the skinny, I mean...
I didn't know if there...
A long skinny one, instead of making it more...
We are, uh, doing ballistic glazing, uh, which has a very high cost value, and so we're creating the spaces, it's a delicate balance, we want as much glass and daylight and views as we can get into the interior spaces, but we're balancing that with the cost. So, what we've got here is actually a very generous amount of glass for what's happening in the program space on the interior, but we are, uh, creating it in a pattern that allows us to, uh, have different programmatic needs. You know, that might be a private office that has two groupings of windows, that might be a conference room that has... be a conference room that has three. So we're, we're using that to our advantage as best as we can. I think the scale plays a little bit of a trick on you when you're looking at it like this, because, because these windows are actually quite large. These are at the floor level, and the, who knows what? And the top is at 10 feet. So if that gives you a sense of proportion, that's a 10-foot-tall window. I think these are maybe six to, I think it's over six feet wide. So you can imagine, I mean, that's as wide as my width and 10 feet tall. So that's a huge window. So this, it's a little deceiving. The scale is tricky. It's just part of kind of the, the visuals of it, but they are, again, quite large.
Tall windows also help us get light into the interior space and the space beyond. Not everybody can have beyond a window, so it gets some of that light to spill across the floor or into the interior offices. Between options one and two, costs are a wash, I'm assuming?
No.
Maintenance are a wash, no? I assume wrong?
Trellis is less.
Okay. Well, I could even...
But that's not supposed to, that's, that's not supposed to influence your direction.
We can, you know, one of the thoughts was bidding both of them at the same time, and then figuring out as an alternate for, for each other, and then figuring out what that cost looked like at the end.
How about long-term maintenance? When is there any tending the other?
I mean, my reaction would be that this option would be easier to maintain. We haven't quite gotten to the details of, is that a painted product? Is field painted, or is it shop painted? And so there's a lot of decision-making.
I would assume you hopefully would want that powder coated just for longer.
Yeah, if it's steel, that would...
I don't know if you could put the bird spikes on there, if you could, how much you would see that or not, if that could be blended or not.
Maybe more voltage current.
Little barbecue chicken. Is there, is there an option for a different color wood than that? Because that's...
Yeah, right.
Other than the...
For the wood, you mean the under...
No, just to, I mean, just to, I mean, there are other options for colors. I think maybe that's what's...
There are.
Detracting me from this color is the color of the wood.
What are you saying against the wood? Should be more light?
More light, yeah.
A lighter color?
Yeah, not the traditional kind of what I call, you know, medium oak kind of color.
Yeah, there are options, absolutely.
Also, I would be careful about the, this is kind of one of my pet these, is the Louisville Public Safety sign blended into your fascia there. A lot of times, you can't see that on letters if you get too far back.
Right.
The other one stands out, and the fire station stands out real well, but this, this one here is gonna, is gonna get hard to see in the right light.
So in concert with what the mayor was talking about, bringing that plaza out toward the intersection, we have the opportunity, like and thrive, to do something really cool. Maybe a, maybe a, you know, a retaining wall with the naming of the, of the facility. I think this is more generic, but well taken.
So, I mean, this, were y'all trying to match the theme of Tha- of Thrive? Kind of? No?
There, there is a lot of discussion.
I was just like, because to me, this is like mid-century desert modern.
Nailed it.
I mean, you know, it would be like, if I went to a nature, when I was in Alaska, there was something that was a museum, look, general to this, because it needed to blend in with the scenery and stuff, just as a pop.
You know, I think, I think there was, and I, I can't speak for the designers, but I do think, I do appreciate, on this design at least, that it's, on both of these designs, is that there is unfortunately a stigma with public safety right now in our community, right? As wrong as it may be. But with that, I think the design really reflects, like, are we a fortress, or are we inviting? So to me, that, that's the question, is whether or not you want to have, and I don't know, I don't, when you say "pop," I do think that there is an intentionality of making this a softer look to be more inviting to the public.
You say fortress and everything, but I'm sorry, but the first, when I first laid eyes on that, I went, "Loose staring, why don't we go on with loose staring?" But I guess, we can't visualize the scale.
We've got about six, seven minutes left, gang, so, other comments?
Color me an accountant, I don't care.
As long as they bring it in with the budget.
I mean, I think we're already, that, that should be a seal already, but, I mean, I guess the question is how that, I guess how that will blend in with older building that it goes to, you know, we don't want orange sock and a green sock, you know, make sure they kind of, but I'm sure you guys have already thought of that, but I think the bigger issue is bringing it in, you know, is getting it done. Kind of carry into it, because I know you're gonna ask which direction you want us to go in at some point. Like, at this point, I think we, we kind of gotta go all in. Hopefully, things will come and then give us some, some tailwinds to the headwinds. Whenever you start your presentation, just start with a dollar amount for me, because that's, everything else is, is fluff. But, no, I do appreciate all the work that you guys do, but I think we need to go forward, because no matter how long we wait, even if it incrementally goes down, the cost is going to go up, no matter what we do. So if we have the funding to do it...
And that was part of our sell to the, to people too, is that we're not gonna have to come back and do this. This is what we want you to do, we did it like this, we're not gonna come back to you to act.
Just probably wait for...
So we just really need to, we need to get this done. We've got stations, we had central fall apart, police department, just, yeah.
Well, any comments, Dan?
I like both of, I, I would lean towards the trellis, but I like, like what I'm seeing.
I was just gonna say that I like the trellis on the fire station, and I like the, the wood on the, the, the police side of it, but, so I kind of agree with their assessment, but I think if I had to pick one, I, I think I'd probably lean more towards the trellis.
It brings the building up a little.
It's not so dark.
Yeah, don't go...
My, my challenge with the, my challenge with the trellis is just simply bird spikes. It's gonna have them, because when you look at grapple season, it's gonna have them.
But the wood's gonna have wasps.
And duck dog would be like crazy.
Well, they knocked the one off of the mayor's office.
No words, no trellis.
Yeah, no roof at all, no roof. It's just, it's like a, it's like a convertible. So I think you could see that we are in that 51-48 percentage here too, so, yeah, yeah. So that, that's where we are.
Well, we'll keep, we have multiple times to come back to you guys still, so we, we hear what you're saying, I, I hear about the windows...
I think there's consensus to keep moving forward.
Keep moving forward. I will say, I have a couple more minutes, and I can get through these if you're okay. So art was not in the bond package, so we did not put that in. But council did say they did want to have that. The good news is, if it was in the bond package, we had to put it as part of the architecture. So because it wasn't in the bond package, what it does mean is we're gonna have to find money in the future. If it comes in under budget, we can need money for that, we can find, we have art, art funds that we can use in the future as well. But really, the most important thing here is to, to have a, a place where we can put it. So we really took the mayor's input about wanting to have a place where it felt like it was a welcoming space. So you can see in the far right corner, down on Valley Parkway, as well as Main Street. So what we have not done is designed this yet, but really, there's a great opportunity to, instead of having parking right there in that corner, is to have a, a moment of pause there. You can have some greens, a courtyard, but also a piece of art, flags to make that, and then a sign that might wrap around it that says the name of the building on it.
Can I, can, I, I have like a really quick input on that. Could, could we pull that, I understand we want it to be able to be seen from the street, but nobody's gonna go out there to the street. If we want people to hang out there, we need to pull it back up.
So you're thinking closer to the plaza versus the plaza?
Yeah, like within, like extend the plaza down a little bit, or however we, we can do that, but it needs to be, if it's separate by, if it's separated by parking lot, nobody's gonna use it.
Okay. Well, we'll look at that, I'm sure we can come up with some creative solutions. The arrows right there was intended to possibly have a raised, not a speed bump, but basically raise the paving or have a different paver so that it connects those areas together. But I guess you don't really need that if you move it over to the plaza.
Well, and you don't wanna go fa, you don't wanna go closer to cars that are driving down the road 45 miles an hour. You wanna go, you wanna be further, closer to the complex.
Okay.
Quick question, Claire, is the, the light junction box on that side of the street? Because that's the one thing that drives me crazy about Thrive, is like, you know, that beautiful Thrive, you know, Louisville Thrive sign.
It's not there.
It is not.
Yeah, it's on the bird, ink one.
You can't see this, I thought this would show up better. But I'll tell you, and you'll have to just believe me what I'm saying. So basically, this is a cheat sheet, it's just a scorecard that shows if you wanted it, if we wanted to apply for, for LEED certification, what we're anticipating we would get if we did LEED certification. So right now, it looks like with a 51, we would be able to get to, we would be somewhere between certified or silver in those, in those marks. Now, I will say, it costs money, and it costs money to pay for the architects to pay, to, to apply for LEED certification. And the, the, in the past, council has directed that they want those dollars to be spent on projects instead, so cost overage rather than getting a feather in our cap, if you guys are comfortable with that, that would be our intent. But we had promised we'd bring back sustainability improvements to you guys to prove that we are putting sustainability as one of our initiatives, so that is the case on this building. And then finally, I just wanted to confirm the names. So we had brought this to council before, but we have new council members on here, so we can bring it back for further discussion, or we can just say go forward, but it would be the Tittle-McFadden Public Safety Complex, named after Tim Tittle and Steve McFadden, if you guys are comfortable with that.
More importantly, are the Fire and Police Departments comfortable with that?
We have not run that by them, but we can do a survey on that if you'd like.
Well, at, at least from the administrative staff.
I think from the administrative staff that is, that has been support.
Okay.
Okay, with that, that's it.
Any questions?
So the direction, I make sure I understand, we're moving forward, we will bring back, we'll further refine the design and bring it back for further consensus from council, and...
Let's throw in those sails like they have at the Denver Airport, like the big campus sails.
Okay, all right.
Circumstance.
Okay, circumstance. That's it.
All right.
It is 7:02, and I am calling this regular session of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. We'll remind everyone that the microphones in this room are live, they pick up all sounds from the dais, as well as the audience area, regardless of if we're live or recessed. So if you want to hear it, speak it. If you all would please rise and join me in invocation, take a moment of silent reflection. Councilmember Green?
Please join me in the pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Green light, we're good to go. All right, so I have the pleasure this evening to recognize some folks who invested some time in their city to get to know it better and to better understand municipal government, and I am very, very pleased about this, this entire event and what it does for our cities. So thank you all so much for being here and for investing in your community. In a moment, I'm going to be calling names of our Citizens University graduates for this year. If you would, I'd appreciate it if you would come up, and then we're gonna be doing a picture. I think our city secretary will kind of arrange us where we need to be for the end of this, but as I call your name, if I could have you come up, and I'm sure I may say a name or two that may not have been able to make it, but we do want to recognize their contribution. So first up, I have Jerica Scott. And please correct me if I butcher your name. And if you could just join me back here, that'd be great. Lucas Saju. Did I come close?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Anna Saju. Ganesh Ramsmamme. I don't have Ganesh tonight. Marcus Mayerhofer. Michael, thank you so much. Julie Garrison. Thank you. Kyle, isn't it? Yeah, not anymore, there we go, sorry about that, Kyle. Christopher Aurelius. Christopher, thank you. And I'd like to just read this real quick. "In recognition of your commitment to completing the Louisville Citizens University comprehensive curriculum, your participation in this leadership development and community education program demonstrates your interest in municipal government services, operations, and decision-making processes. The accomplishment displays your community pride and spirit. With respect and appreciation, the Louisville City Council and staff seek your continued participation in civic affairs, and by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Louisville, Texas, I have issued this honor on the 20th day of June 2022. Thank you all so much, and please give them a round of applause for their time and effort." Mr. Kunkky, did you want to do? Okay, so...
I'm pretty kind of seeking the... See, can we do this? Do I show?
Sure, please. Get the panorama shot in there?
Oh, yes. We can get a little...
Three or four minutes from now, y'all, it's fine. Thank you, thank you all, appreciate it. And I want to thank city staff and all the departments that are involved in this. I know it takes a lot of time and effort, but it really helps to get a better understanding, build advocates for our community. And you know what? Have community that asks questions and gets involved, and, and, you know, not, not every decision is made here, it's made out in the community. And so being able to have that feedback is important, because everybody brings a different perspective and different resources to the table. So thank you again, staff. Just so y'all know, there's my, there's my green light, there we go. Just so y'all know that the next Citizens University selection process will be held in August, with a session start date of September 29th. So if you have friends or colleagues who have expressed an interest in, in learning more about their city, about now is the time to start at least asking questions and reaching out to our city secretary, and she can get you the application information. Item D, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized demonstrations will not be permitted, and in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, are there any comment cards?
No, sir, we've not received any.
All right. Moving on to item E, unless there's anyone here that did... The Main Street and Mill Street Improvements Project in Old Town Lewisville was completed in the summer of 2021, and it is standard practice for the city to conduct speed studies upon the completion of roadway projects to determine if the speed limit needs to be changed. The project changed the roadway characteristics and reduced the number of travel lanes on both Mill Street and Main Street. Traffic speed studies were conducted earlier this spring on both streets. For Mill Street, the studies determined that the speed limit should be lowered from 35 to 30 miles per hour in the segment between Main Street and Purnell, and from 40 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour in the segment between College Street and Main Street. For Main Street, the speed study indicating the existing 35 mile per hour speed limit from Mill Street to Railroad Street is appropriate based on the 85th percentile speed, and is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. And we have Mr. David Salmon, our city engineer, available for questions. If there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item eight, Consideration of Resolution Nominating a Representative and an Alternate Representative to the North Central Texas Council of Governments Regional Transportation Council. The Regional Transportation Council of the North Central Texas Council of Governments allocates seats on the council by region and city population. Lewisville is in a cluster region along with Highland Village and Flower Mound. The cluster's current representative to the Regional Transportation Council is Mayor Protem Jones. RTC membership is made up of local elected or appointed officials from the metropolitan area and representatives from each of the area's transportation providers. Mayor Protem Jones has expressed an interest in continuing to serve in this position. The current alternate representative to the Regional Transportation Council is Charlotte Wilcox, the former mayor of Highland Village. However, due to no longer being an elected official, a new representative will need to be appointed to serve as the alternate representative. It is recommended that the city council approve a resolution nominating Mayor Protem Brandon Jones as representative and nominating Mayor Daniel Jaworski as the alternate representative as set forth in the caption above. I did talk with Mayor Jaworski, and he does concur. He would like to serve. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution nominating Mayor Protem Brandon Jones as representative and nominating Mayor Daniel Jaworski as the alternate representative as set forth in the caption.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item nine, Consideration of the Midyear Report and Consideration of Supplemental Appropriations to the Following Funds. General Fund in the amount of 1.5 million, Debt Service Fund in the amount of 15,345,514, Hotel Motel Fund in the amount of 90,000, PEG Fund in the amount of 20,000, Grant Fund in the amount of 226,458, Utility Fund in the amount of 366,866, Drainage Fund in the amount of 374,898, Maintenance and Replacement Fund in the amount of 336,920, Risk Fund in the amount of 500,000, and the other Post Employment Benefits Liability Fund in the amount of 290,030. As part of the midyear budget process, both revenue and expense accounts are reviewed for all operating funds. A presentation is provided that outlines the financial experience the city has seen through June of this fiscal year. The analysis also provides a determination of any adjustments that may be needed for fiscal year 2022. Part of this process includes an updated analysis of the Castle Hills budget after it was incorporated with the City of Lewisville's budget upon annexation. As anticipated, adjustments related to Castle Hills are needed. Those adjustments, along with additional supplemental appropriations as detailed below, are requested for approval. Council, this was going to be covered by the team in workshop, but we ran out of time, so they are going to take the workshop presentation and roll it into here. And then when their, when staff is done, we will go ahead and move forward with that.
We're having a slight computer issue. It looks like some updates are in progress.
Oh, perfect. Windows strikes again.
This might take several minutes. Almost there. There we go. It's almost there. Promise.
We can get the jeopardy theme going.
Keep the software to do the light bulb.
And we have, Deanne Tompkins is presenting for us today, just so that we have a name to go with the face and the updates.
Oh, there we go.
You just have to walk away.
Just step away from it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Deanne Tompkins, and I'm the Budget Manager for the City of Lewisville. We're going to go over our midyear budget. HDL Companies is our consultant that we use for sales and hotel occupancy tax monitoring. This is a report that we received in March of 2022. So we are anticipating an updated report in June this month. And if there are any significant changes, we will definitely come back to you and let you know what those changes are. As of this report, they were anticipating still some growth coming into 2023 and through the fourth quarter of 2023. So they have taken into consideration, or what we're considering in this, is that there aren't any impacts, any significant economic impacts from COVID variants. Also, that the Ukraine conflict doesn't escalate and create beyond the current scope. And then also that there aren't any, like, global energy market disruptions. And so those are the things they've taken into consideration. So we'll come back to you. I'm anxious to see what the report for June of 2022 says, but basically, they're showing that our sales and tax trends will remain positive through FY '23. For our adopted revenue versus our revised, as you can see, our property tax is increased, or is projected to increase by 2.2 million. Our sales tax is projected to increase by 2.8 million. We want to just remind you that that is a very conservative estimate. We are taking into consideration the 2.5 million that we're reducing every year until we reach 10 million. This is to prepare for potential legislative changes that could impact our sales tax receipts. Next year, probably what you'll see in our proposed budget is anywhere from 36 to 38 million for sales tax revenue. And then the other category, which includes our permits, our landfills, et cetera, that is projected to increase by 4.6 million. Here is a chart or a graph that shows you our revenue diversity. On the left-hand side, you see general fund only, where we have a 32% sales tax, 29% other, and 38% property. A portion of our sales tax is allocated to our 4B Crime Control and Fire Control Fund. So if we took all of that sales tax and put it into the general fund, that would be a 42% sales tax, 33% property tax, and a 25% other.
And the reason for doing that is because those are staff positions that are funded for both police and fire.
Correct.
So they would be staffing requirements that would need to be handled regardless.
Correct. This was a, just an attachment that came with HDL, showing the eight. So in all eight of these categories, it does show an increase year over year. You can see that it does impact the third quarter a little bit more. So we, that's kind of what we're seeing right now. But we'll see this updated in June, this month as well. This is our general fund, other revenue variances. So anything that's not property tax or sales taxes included in that other category. On the upper part of the bar, you can see what we're showing an increase. And then below the line, you can see where we're showing some decreases in revenue. And we're going to go over those in a little bit more detail. Ambulance fees. So as you may recall, last year, we came to you and requested to outsource our ambulance billing. And so we have done that. And so far this year, our sales, not sales tax, our billing collections have increased by 6%. Along with a total number of EMS calls increasing, we are showing a $490,491 increase in ambulance fees. Building permits. We have seen a significant growth in building permits for this year. I think this goes along with kind of what Chris Squadrill was saying, that we would see these this fiscal year. Our biggest growth has been in commercial construction. We saw a 150% increase in 20, in the first quarter, and then a 133% increase in the second quarter. It is important to note that only 14% of this is related to Castle Hills, and those are actually mostly pool and residential irrigation permits. The landfill host fees for waste management, we're projecting an increase of 193,000. The landfill is closing, but it's not closing as quickly as we thought. So we are receiving revenue. They're currently receiving material, but are not receiving as much. And we are showing a trend down as compared to the increases. Atmos and CoServe, they're projected up 201. These are the franchise fees. And they're projected up 201,417,000 respectively. CoServe is completely related to Castle Hills. Atmos is related more to the amount that they're billing customers. Franchise and payment in lieu of taxes from the utility fund. This is based on the increase, which we'll see in just a minute, in the utility fund for water sales and sewer sales. So franchise is 1% of that revenue, and that gets paid to the general fund from the utility fund. And then pilot is 4% of that revenue that gets paid from the utility fund to the general fund. Park fees are projected up 237,000. It's based on projects that were known in development. There is an expenditure related to this revenue, an equal expenditure, that is a transfer out to capital improvement projects. The, where to the, some of the revenues that we're projecting a decrease. Texas Ambulance Supplemental Payment Program, that's a program where the state helps providers recover some of the costs from uncompensated care. We're seeing a decrease. There are more providers this year, and there's less money to dole out to the providers. They are anticipating normalization in FY 2023. The public safety contract, that is a decrease of 221,000. So we budgeted the first one and a half months prior to annexation to receive revenue from the public safety contract. GASP requires that we treat the annexation as if it occurred on October 1st, as if it occurred on the first day of the fiscal year. So for that reason, there won't be any charges to Castle Hills for that first month and a half prior to annexation. Commercial refuse, we're showing a decrease there of 119,000. It's basically based on a skewed actual in 2019 of 1.9 million, so that showed a trend higher than what was actually occurring. And engineering inspection fees, a decrease of 120. This is also based on projects that are known. There was a development project that we anticipated occurring in this fiscal year that's not going to occur in this fiscal year, and it looks like that one's going to be in 2023. Some good news here is the hotel motel revenue. We're projecting an increase of 404,000 in hotel motel tax collections. Also, what's good, what's really good news here is we're starting to show signs of, occupancy rates are starting to show signs of pre-COVID normalization, which is great news on this. As you can see, we're, our adopted budget was 1.5 million, and we're projecting 1.9 million. On this next slide, this is actually, these are actually the occupancy rates. And you can see that prior to COVID, we were at 71% year-to-date, and for FY 2022, we're at 68.6%. We just received the update on Friday for this, and as of Friday, we were at 69.5%. So we are showing an increase in hotel occupancy rates. Utility fund revenue projections. Water sales are projected to increase 5.4 million. This is based on year-to-date collections and then average of the past three years. 70% of this is related to Castle Hills. 70% of the increase is related to Castle Hills, and the 30% is a trend, is based on a trend in use. The rate increase that we had last year, 4.9%, is already included in the budget. For sewer service, we are projecting a 2.6 million increase, $2.6 million increase, and this is entirely related to Castle Hills. Water and capital recovery fees, 702,618,000 increases. Those are based on known construction activity. And our other sales tax-supported funds, 4B Crime Control and Fire Control, are all projecting increases as well, 809 in the 4B, 404 in Crime Control, and 404 in Fire Recreation Activity Fund, this fund is being impacted by the staffing challenges. Several programs have had to be reduced or delayed, including aquatic programs, adult leagues, fitness programs, and some after-school programming. Also, it was originally thought that during the Fred Herring construction, that we would be able to still rent out the gyms. However, it has been determined that we cannot do that due to demolition sequences. The thing about this fund is the expenditures are one-to-one, so if we're not receiving the revenue, we're also not, we're not spending the funds. So they're related one-to-one. So the timeline for the Castle Hills budget is basically last year, when we started our budget process, our departments were all asked to enter action steps related to Castle Hills and what they thought, how they thought their departments would be impacted. And that started with our budget process for FY 2022, so early on in 2021. Then our city staff met with the general manager of the freshwater supply district, and they created a joint budget for FY 2022. This budget was based on one and a half months under the district oversight, and then the next 10 and a half months under the city's oversight. In November, on November 1st, we brought to you the supplemental related to the Castle Hills annexation, and that was approved. And then on November 15th, Castle Hills was officially annexed into the city. For sewer service, we are projecting a 2.6 million increase, $2.6 million increase, and this is entirely related to Castle Hills. Water and capital recovery fees, $702,618,000 increases. Those are based on known construction activity. And our other sales tax-supported funds, a 4B crime control and fire control are all projecting increases as well. 809 in the 4B, 404 in crime control, and 404 in fire control. Recreation Activity Fund. This fund is being impacted by the staffing challenges. Several programs have had to be reduced or delayed, including aquatic programs, adult leagues, fitness programs, and some after-school programming. Also, it was originally thought that during the Fred Herring construction, that we would be able to still rent out the gems. However, it has been determined that we cannot do that due to demolition sequences. The thing about this fund is the expenditures are one-to-one, so if we're not receiving the revenue, we're also not, we're not spending the funds. So they're related one-to-one. So the timeline for the Castle Hills budget is basically last year, when we started our budget process, our departments were all asked to enter action steps related to Castle Hills and what they thought, how they thought their departments would be impacted. And that started with our budget process for FY 2022, so early on in 2021. Then our city staff met with the general manager of the freshwater supply district, and they created a joint budget for FY 2022. This budget was based on one and a half months under the district oversight, and then the next 10 and a half months under the city's oversight. In November, on November 1st, we brought to you the supplemental related to the Castle Hills annexation, and that was approved. And then on November 15th, Castle Hills was officially annexed into the city. The total supplemental that we brought to you was $14.8 million. Eight of that was to the general fund. 6.5 of that was to the utility fund, and 216,000 was to the drainage fund. We have revenue that supports the expenditures in the utility fund and into the drainage fund. We are at about $5 million in revenues right now in the general fund, and that is just based on a different methodology between the way we allocated the funds and the way the districts allocated the funds. We anticipate that being resolved next fiscal year. As far as the ongoing budget into next fiscal year, we're bringing forward 11.4 million. So the entire 4.8 million is not being brought forward. We have definitely experienced some staffing challenges so far this fiscal year. You can see that we had 800, we have 700, sorry, 878 open, or positions, budgeted positions. And right now, we have 100, or fiscal year-to-date, this was June, as of June 14th, 2022, we had 113 openings. That's 12.9%. Last year at this time, we had 825 positions, and we had 64 openings, that's 7.75%. So you can see the difference between last year and this year. And Shante is going to speak to this in further detail. If we look at our turnover, we have 11.5% turnover this fiscal year compared to 7.75 last fiscal year.
So as Deanne mentioned, we are having opportunities as it relates to staffing. The first stat that she went over with you all is basically called our vacancy stat. And so our vacancy rate right now is at 13% if we go ahead and round up, compared to what it was last year at almost 8%. And then as she mentioned, our current turnover rates are also higher. Our turnover rate is about 12% compared to 8% of the previous year. Now, this is probably not new to you, because I'm sure in your workplace, you are experiencing some of the same things. So the vacancy rate kind of speaks to our inability to actually attract and recruit top talent. The turnover rate kind of speaks to our inability to retain that talent. Now, being that this is an issue for us, we are asking council for $150,000 so that we can conduct a compensation study. The compensation study will look at our pay plan to make sure that it is competitive in the marketplace. Long story short, it basically will look at our salary ranges and compare that, those salary ranges to what you find in private for some positions like engineers, which compete in the private sector, as with IT. And then compare that to what we are currently making, paying our employees. We will also look at all of our job descriptions and position titles as a component of this $150,000 for the consultants. Any questions on that?
I have a question.
Okay.
A question real quick. So the turnover, does this include retirements, or would that be separate?
This number does include retirements.
Do we know what percentage of that would be retirement?
I don't have that information in front of me, but we can give it to you.
Okay, just curious.
Yes, no problem. We can get that for you. Any other questions?
I did want to add something. So Mayor and Council, obviously at our retreat, one of the priorities, top priorities for council was retaining, attracting, and developing our talent. And so our intent originally was to have this compensation study be part of our budget package. But I will be honest, when you look at these numbers, this is a problem we're having now. And so to get started right now was of utmost importance, and so that's why we're putting it forward at this point. The one thing to note, though, is the worst thing you can do is have a compensation study and not fund the compensation study. So like, not the compensation study. Have a compensation study that tells you you have to pay people additional dollars and then don't actually fund those additional dollars to pay those folks. So with that saying is if we are moving this route and you are comfortable with it, just note there will also be, part of your budget will be, your upcoming budget for the next fiscal year will include additional cost increases. It is likely we will have additional cost increases for that. And we would basically put that into your base budget. But I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that before moving forward.
The non-retirement rate is 10.19.
Gina being so great with all of her data and her stats, she was able to get that information for you, and that information is...
So the non-retirement rate is 10.19. So of the 11 and a half, 10 of it is non-retirements.
Okay, thank you.
Some positions and ads that have occurred after the adopted budget are an assistant city attorney for the city attorney's office. This is based on workload. We do currently have the funding allocated to outside legal, so we can use that funding to fund this position this fiscal year and into next fiscal year. Project Manager for Information Technology, that came to you with the CAD project, so that was a supplemental that was approved at that time. The multifamily inspector, that came to you at the last council meeting, is part of the multifamily inspection program. So the supplemental for that program was, or for that position was approved at that time. And then, of course, we had 31 positions approved upon annexation. Some supplemental appropriations for this fiscal year. The first one is 1.5 million. This, sorry. The comptroller initiated new rules related to online sales. This moved towards destination sourcing rather than origin. The ruling would have eliminated the sales tax that we received from the, from online distributor, distribution centers within the city boundaries that were delivered outside the city. So because of that ruling, economic development incentives that were based on sales tax for these types of businesses was not budgeted, because we didn't anticipate receiving that, the revenue. Well, pending, due to pending litigation, that ruling hasn't been put on hold. And so we have started unexpectedly receiving that revenue from those entities. Based on existing ED agreements, if we're receiving that revenue, then there are payments that are required to go out to those entities. The funding amounts to 1.592. There are some savings in the fund, and so we don't need the full amount of the 1.5 million to satisfy those agreements. The debt service fund, so the refunding of the outstanding Castle Hills bonds, the bonds were sold in force series. By refunding these bonds, there was a $21 million savings in principal and 39 million in savings over the life of the bonds. There is revenue related to these payments included in the debt service fund summary, and it's $15.345 million. Hotel motel fund, $90,000 of one-time funding out of reserves. This is to construct the visitor information center parking lot outside the, in the property between, or right to the east, south, south of the visitor information center.
I did want to clarify that that's going to be a temporary parking lot, so we're still working on what is going to be done in the long term behind the grand. I think there's some discussion about, you know, potential music hall. There's also discussions about mixed-use potential development from different council members and what that might look like. So this is just a temporary parking lot.
$20,000 out of the PEG fund. This is, this is computer equipment related to the new mobile video production vehicle. The expected delivery of this vehicle is the end of this calendar year. The grant fund, we're asking for $226,000 in the grant fund. This accounts for fire department deployments. We budget $200,000 annually for these deployments. This year, it has been very active, and deployments are now budgeted at around $686,000. We are, the city is reimbursed for these deployments. So, and also there were some changes in timing with grants that reduced grant amounts. So even though we're at $685,000, we're only asking for $226,000 at this time. The utility fund, so this is related to that pilot and franchise increase that we covered earlier in the general fund. So this is an expense to the utility fund, so in order to cover that increase in revenue, the percentage that has to go to the general fund, this is what, the 366, 367,000 is covering. The drainage fund, last year, there was additional drainage revenue. So this will allow us to move that additional funding to the capital improvement project related to the drainage fund. All of the remaining operations, so we had some drainage right-of-way related funding or related staffing in the general fund, and that has all been moved to the drainage fund as well. So now everything stormwater drainage related is in the drainage fund rather than the general fund. Maintenance and replacement fund, we're asking for $337,000. These are lease payments related to the vehicles that were brought over from Castle Hills. So this is basically to bring those lease payments where they would be if they had always been with the city of Louisville. This is a transfer from the general fund, so the general fund brings this in, so there is revenue to offset this expense. And the risk fund, we're asking for $500,000. This is actually related, some to our COVID claims. And if you'll recall, in FY 21, we moved $1 million into the reserves of the risk fund to cover the higher claims, the anticipated claims that we expected to occur. This $500,000 is a request to use a portion of that $1 million. And then the OPEP fund, $29300. This accounts for future liabilities associated with the retiring health claims, and it's based on the latest actuarial study, which assesses the current liabilities. And that is it in a nutshell. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Counsel, we're all good? Ms. Tompkins, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counsel, it's the recommendation that we approve the mid-year report and supplemental appropriations as set forth in the caption. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the mid-year report and supplemental appropriations as set forth in the caption above.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item 10, consideration of appointments to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team. The focus of the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team includes creating stronger community collaboration around community goals to end homelessness, better data collection and sharing, and educating and informing the community about solutions to homelessness and the community impact. The DCHLT is made up of representatives from Denton County, City of Denton, City of Louisville, City of Sanger, board members from homelessness and housing providers, healthcare providers, and members of the United Way of Denton County Board. The City of Louisville appoints two members to the team, a council member and a city staff member or member of the community. Both Councilwoman Cade and Neighborhood Services Coordinator, Coordinator Ashley Farren's terms have ended, and the DCHLT has expressed an interest in their continued service as appointee representatives for the city of Louisville. It is recommended that the city council reappoint Councilmember Ronnie Cade and Neighborhood Services Coordinator Ashley Farren to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to reappoint Councilwoman Ronnie Cade and Neighborhood Services Coordinator Ashley Farren to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes six to nothing. Item 11, partial tabled item. Discussion and consideration of appointments to various city boards, commissions, committees, and including the tabled item, consideration of an appointment to place number two on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Various terms of office on the city's boards, commissions, and committees are expiring. Those positions have been identified and current appointees notified. The Board, Commissions, Committee Appointment Process Electronic Notebook has been created for city council's review. Data sheets for members requesting reappointment to all new applicants have been included in the electronic book. At the June 6, 2022, city council meeting, interview teams and board commission committee interview assignments were determined. At the same meeting, council declared a vacancy in place number two of the Planning and Zoning Commission and tabled consideration of a new appointment to this meeting. It's recommended that the city council proceed with the appointments to various city boards, commissions, committees, as set forth in the caption above. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint the following members to two-year terms unless otherwise noted, and table the Arts Advisory Board Place Two until a qualified applicant submits an application. I will list off the names by board and name, place and name. Animal Services, Place Two, will reappoint Denise Crafton. Place Four, reappoint Amanda Earl. Place Six, reappoint Deanna Perkins. Arts Advisory Board, as stated before, Place Two will remain vacant until applicant who is employed by a hotel or other attraction is found. Place Four will reappoint Sarah Hicks. Place Six, Jennifer Lindy. Place Eight, Michael Gorts. Community Development Block Advisory, Block Advisory Committee, Place Two, reappoint Robin Johnston. Place Four, reappoint Lori Wilson. Place Six, appoint Timothy Fields. Library Board, Place Two, Kay Stevenson. Place Four, Anna Saju. Place Six, reappoint Denise Borges. Old Town Design Review Committee, Place Two, appoint Ardis Malinsky. Place Four, reappoint Randy Tetslaf. Park Board, Place Two, Elizabeth Flores. Place Four, reappoint Chris Crawford. Place Six, reappoint Blake Wayne. Place Eight, reappoint Jim Dormer. Dahmer. PNZ, Place One, Ryan Conway. Place Two, Robert French to the unexpired term. Place Three, reappoint Mary Ellen Misca. Place Five, reappoint Karen Locke. Place Seven, reappoint Francesca Alwali. Ters One, reappoint Francesca Alwali. Place Four, reappoint Kelly F. Stokes. Ters Two, reappoint Bob Troyer. Place Four, appoint Patrick Kelly. Ters Three, reappoint Bob Troyer. Place Three, reappoint Kristen Green. Place Five, reappoint William Meredith. Ters Four, place Five, reappoint Brandon Jones. Place Six, reappoint Kristen Green. ZBOA, place Two, reappoint Ardis Malinsky. Place Four, appoint John Deal. Alternate place Two, appoint Kyle Birch. Louisville 2025 Advisory Board, place Two, reappoint John Deal. Place Four, reappoint Amanda Ferguson. And place Six, reappoint Karen Locke.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counsel, are there any questions or comments before we go ahead and vote?
One comment, I think Place Six is actually, Park Board is actually Blake Wayne, not Blake Wayne.
That's correct. It's a typo on your sheet, Mayor Proton.
What's the name again?
It's Wayne, is it Wayne? Wayne.
Oh. So noted, place, Park Board, place Six, Blake Wayne.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, counsel, if you would please Motion approved as presented, six to nothing. Item G, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. We do have a Capital Improvements Advisory Committee semi-annual report for the period of April 1, 2021 through March 31, 2022. Believe that's in our packets. So that is required by, I think, state law that we get those. With that, I'm going to start with Councilmember Jones.
I wanted, first off, I want to thank the staff for, I mean, last week was kind of a double whammy. They had the music, the sounds of Louisville on Tuesday, and they also did two events for the Juneteenth event, and I want to thank them for their spectacular effort. The event at the grand was spectacular. I think everyone there learned something new about Juneteenth, including myself. And it was a great, great event that was enjoyed by all. And the music on Friday was absolutely outstanding. Full crowd after the sun went down, and it got a little cooler. One thing, you know, I would love to do an event again, but I would like to be a little bit more community-driven and work with other organizations and kind of incorporate it on that Tuesday so that our staff is not doing double duty on Tuesday and Friday. But otherwise, just a fantastic... But otherwise, just a fantastic event. And lastly, I just want to thank the council for reappointing me to the Regional Transportation Committee. It's a very interesting thing. We have a lot of things going on in Louisville and the surrounding area, in North Texas, and it's a great, great learning experience, and I'm going to work to make sure that we get things that we need as we move forward because twenty forty-five is coming before we know it, and we're going to have a lot more people, a lot more neighbors. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Cade? Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. America's News Digital Newspaper Collection, the Louisville Public Library now offers that digital newspaper collection. News Bank's America's News provides Louisville library cardholders with online access to current and archived issues of more than four thousand full-text newspapers, including Louisville Leader, Denton Record Chronicle, and Fort Worth Star Telegram. Tween Scene for children ages nine to twelve, Wednesday, June twenty-second, four to five p.m. Ticket is required at the Bennett Program Room. Genealogy Two, researching your ancestors using familiesearch.org for adults age eighteen plus, Thursday, June twenty-third, six thirty to seven thirty. Registration is required, and that is at the computer lab. K-pop dance class for teens age thirteen to eighteen, Thursday, June twenty-third, six thirty to seven thirty. Registration is required at the Glenmore Savage Community Room. Teddy Bear Boats for children ages three to six with a caregiver, Friday, June twenty-fourth, eleven to noon. Ticket is required at the Bennett Children's Wing. And Scrapbook Afternoon for adults age eighteen plus, Friday, June twenty-fourth, two to four p.m. No registration required at the Crawford Meeting Room. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, Mayor, I have a number of things for the grand theater. First of all, related to the Acoustic Fridays, Acoustic Friday Jams presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, this, June twenty-fourth, there is a songwriting challenge, and the theme for this, theme for this month is dream. So if you have a song that you've just, is just in the, you know, on your, on the tip of your tongue and you'd like to perform that song this coming Friday night, June twenty-fourth, you can do it at the acoustic jam at the, at the grand theater. And then we have, of course, the Songs of Louisville presented by the city of Louisville on this, tomorrow night, the twenty-first, will be the Elton John's, the Black Box Songwriter Series, Courtney Patton on the twenty-sixth, Songs of Louisville Grupo Vida on the twenty-eighth. And then for the, excuse me, for the July fourth celebration, which will be, actually, Songs of Louisville is on July fifth, will be Ashmore, and that will be with fireworks. So come on out for that. And then there are a number of activities going on. Art pop-up in the plaza presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, that's on, oh, this says June eleventh, is that already, that's already passed? Right, anyway. Yoga in the Plaza presented by Blue Andrew Studios on Wednesdays. Pilates in the Plaza presented by Pilates in the City on Thursdays. And then Tai Chi in the Plaza presented by Lowell Johnson on Saturdays. And there are two exhibitions going on in the theater right now. Nancy Sterling, winner of the twenty twenty-one Fresh Ideas Show Mostly Texas, presented by the Visual Art League of Louisville, June eleventh through July ninth. And Shifting Perspectives, also by the Visual Art League of Louisville, and again, June eleventh through June ninth. And that's what's going on at the grand.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary?
No, no report.
No report?
Mayor, the lake level right now is at five twenty-two point seventy-five, so we're still above the normal pool elevation.
All right, thank you.
No report, Mayor. No report.
City Manager? All right, so I have a couple of small items. First of all, I would like to reiterate, what do we got? Sorry, I like to, I like to skip the hole over there. So there we go. That seems to be a running joke for me. Sorry about that.
I have nothing to report.
Even better, even better.
That's like to be called.
It's perfect. Councilmember Green?
I did have something to say. So I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the Citizens University graduates this evening. I know that took a lot of effort and time away from your families, so we appreciate you getting involved, looking forward to seeing you getting further involved in city boards and commissions, and just being advocates for our community, letting people know what's going on. And along that vein, because I do get asked frequently by people wanting to know, how do I know that, you know, what you're talking about at the council meeting or what events are coming up? If you go to the city's website, there's a ribbon across the top that says, there's a button that says residence info, and you can go sign up for it. We have multiple newsletters you can sign up for, including the Louisville Horizon, which is just kind of a general, this is all the stuff that's going on. Then we have a newsletter for our Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have one for the grand theater, one for the police department, one for Louisville Live that talks about our latest live music bookings. And then we have one that you can sign up for that will, you will get the, the meeting agendas for these meetings and for the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings. So I would encourage everyone to go sign up for those newsletters. I get them, and just, it's a really great way to at least stay informed about things that are going on in your community. It's a quick read, and yeah. So again, congratulations to the Citizens University graduates.
Super, thank you so much. A few items, I would like to reiterate, Councilmember Jones's comments regarding Juneteenth, there were some amazing events. Really do appreciate the, the community stepping forward. I know we'll miss some, but you know, first on my mind is, of course, West Side Baptist Church. They, they had some wonderful speakers. Here's what I will tell you. We up here, I think, I can speak for counsel on this one, we are absolutely ecstatic when the community comes to us and says, we want to put on events, and we want to figure it out. That shows ownership, shows pride of place, shows building community. And by gosh, if, if any of our other populations want to come out and celebrate something, we will figure out a way to support it. But I also want to be clear, that's not the city's role to build this and hand it out. The city doesn't understand the culture and the events around it. The city doesn't necessarily have the resources to put that all together. That's why we depend on the community, and that's why we need you to help with that lifting. So if you're looking at what happened with Juneteenth and you went, wow, I'd like to maybe do a Diwali thing or some other type of event, that's awesome. We would love for you to do that. Understand that it's, it's a, it's a hand in hand. It's not just throw it up to the city and have the city do it. That doesn't work. The community doesn't get involved. But when the community brings it to the table, we'll help with advertising, we'll find ways to get, get the word out for you. So I, I hope that folks see the Juneteenth event as, as an opportunity to have their voice heard, no matter what community they come from, and to share that with us, and not necessarily put it all on our city staff, but to absolutely have that community come out, and we will help. I do want to make a couple of other quick announcements. First Friday's coming up on January, or July first, I believe, we have a new Old Town business that has just opened up. I shouldn't say it's a business because it's a not-for-profit, but it's the old Huffines on Main and Mill, and it is a beautiful home furnishing space, the home decor, as well as rental space for events, and all the proceeds go to charity. So if you get a chance, go check it out. They did a wonderful job preserving the history of the space while creating a new way to engage. So really, thanks so much to Sparrow Collective and their investment here in Old Town, and to, of course, our Old Town Business District and their continued First Fridays event. And then the city manager and I had an opportunity, along with some of the city staff, including our Parks Director, to be at the ribbon, ribbon cutting for our National Water Trail. And this was this past weekend, and we have a national water trail. Bet you didn't know that. But it comes from Fort Worth, goes to Dallas, and comes all the way up to Louisville. We have two locations on this trail, and we have to meet several requirements to be national. And so one of these is we have an amazing ADA compliant put-in, so you can come, launch kayak, whatever they want to call it, pier. I'm really water-based, growing up in the desert, so works out for me well. But this kayak launch is amazing. I actually got to use it a couple of months ago, and we, we did the ribbon cutting for it this weekend. But I am so proud of our community for making that investment in green spaces and allowing other people the opportunity to come share in our watershed and in the Trinity River and all the great things that make up Leela. So it was a busy weekend. With that, we are going to go into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five five one point oh seven two, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section five five one point oh eight seven, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. We are in closed session. As there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, I call this meeting adjourned.